Good evening. The regular meeting of the Belle Farce City Council is called to order on Monday, December 9, 2019 at 7:02 PM. Back to open session. On the agenda was supposedly a closed session, but there was no item, so there is no closed session conducted tonight. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Mayor Santenaz.
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Ray Dutton, and in the place of allegiance will be led by PJ Melada, our Director of Parks and Recreation. Please rise.
Please bow your heads. Oh Heavenly Father, thank you for all you do. Bless us here tonight as our actions tonight, and assist us with building a strong and caring community. May you lend us your wisdom to find solutions of the issues that become before us. We thank you for the opportunity to help others, and the opportunity to try to improve our way of life. And please bless our mayor Sonny Santa Inez for his greatest year ever. We also ask for your protection and blessings for military men and women, and may they always return safely to their families. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ray, and thank you PJ. The next item is council reorganization. Mr. Stewart.
City Clerk will handle this for you.
Nominations are now open for the Office of Mayor of the City of Belleflower. Nominations do not require a second.
I'd like to nominate Juan Garza.
Although it's not required, I would love the second nomination.
Move to close the nominations.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garza.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Garza.
Thank you, appreciate that, Sonny.
Now you may conduct the nominations for Mayor Protem.
Great. Thank you so much. At this point, I'd like to call for nominations for the position of Mayor Protem. If you may indulge me, I'd be honored to nominate Councilmember Dan Coops.
Again, it's not required, but I would love the second nomination of Dan Coops.
Move that we close nominations.
Nominations are now closed. When I call your name, please state aye or no. Councilmember Dutton.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada.
Aye.
Councilmember Coops.
Aye.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Aye.
Mayor Garza.
Aye.
Congratulations.
If you don't mind, Councilmembers, do you mind if we just stay in our seats just for the sake of time?
It will not take long. I promise.
Yeah, it's okay if you don't mind. We'll just stay here.
You're not the mayor anymore, Sonny.
I know. I like to move to your spot. I like that spot. Okay? That's where I'm going anyway.
No, thank you for indulging me. Just so we can get to our meeting and hopefully get to celebrating here soon. Before we move on, I'd like to open up at this point in time for, I'd like to invite my fellow councilmembers for comments. I'd like to start off with Councilmember Sonny Santenaz.
Thank you, Mayor Garza. I'm the first one to call him Mayor Garza, so let it be on the record, please. It's been a wonderful year for me, and I don't want to belabor that. I think we'll have an opportunity sometime next month to do that, but I really want to let you guys know, to let our residents know, that it's been a wonderful experience for me to work with this marvelous gentleman on the dais. And I look forward to continuing to work with them. We're on to a lot of things, good things, in the city of Belleflower. And let me just summarize what I want to say. In the state of the city, the theme was "The Best Is Yet To Come." And I firmly believe that. And if you just stay on with us, be with us, you will see that the best is yet to come. And I want to congratulate Mayor Garza for this achievement. I know it's kind of a lot of work being a mayor, and I'm very happy to relinquish that. And one of the beauties in the cities like Belleflower, these small cities, is we get to serve one year as mayor. It's a wonderful experience to be called mayor. I mean, let me share that with you. It's a big deal to be mayor, especially a small city like Belleflower, especially for me, because as you recall, I selected Belleflower. Bellewater did not select me. I came to Belleflower by choice. And so it's wonderful for me to be serving as councilmember, and more importantly, to be a mayor of the city of Belleflower. So Mayor Garza, I look forward to continuing to work with you. We have a lot of great things in store for the city of Belleflower, and for our residents, our businesses. And again, the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Councilmember Dutton.
Well, thank you, Mayor Garza. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Garza and his family and relatives for getting this chance to be a mayor of this wonderful city. I know you do an excellent job, and our future is in good hands when it comes to you. And I'd like to share some of my time and thank Sonny Santa Inez to what he has offered this city for the last year, as leading this and taking all the good emails and also the bad emails, and handled it well. He was there, he was very, very visual and present in a lot of things. It's a very busy job. It takes a little toll on you, and I think in a way, tomorrow he's gonna go, "This is kinda nice." But Sonny did an excellent job of leading this city and leading us up here on the dais down the road with all the struggles that we'd had for the last year. And with that, thank you for your services, Mayor, Sonny.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, no, it's well deserved, Juan. I'm gonna call you Juan. But, Mr. Mayor, again, I think 2020 is gonna be exciting. I know with, again, with your background and what you've done, you know, here to move things forward, I know that there'll be a lot of more great things that are gonna happen. And so we are definitely looking forward to that. And you have an awesome family, and, you know, and I know they're happy. All right, they're all smiling at this point, hopefully. But again, Juan always looked up to you as a dear friend, and again, a leader in this community. And you've done a lot in a short amount of time, I would say, but, so again, looking forward to step in, to do what, again, we all, what we can do to move, again, your stuff, again, move your projects forward, and it's just a great time again. Look at immediate past Mayor Sonny. Again, thank you. It's been an awesome year, again, during my first year, and again, just, again, great things have happened. And you can check off a lot of things, a lot of firsts, and again, we are, you know, moving Belleflower forward, and it's, like you said, the best is yet to come, and definitely we just, we see all positive. And we're all, again, we're all excited, and we're looking forward to it. All right? Thank you both, and again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, my friend. Mayor Protem Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor Garza, thanks so much. So I'm gonna first talk a little bit about our past mayor, immediate past Mayor Sonny, who really did a wonderful job of directing us this past year. Sonny is the kind of guy that's very, very persistent, and you look at how he got to this place on the council as mayor. He ran for office more than once and didn't always win. Now, most of us say, "You know what? That's enough." But you tried school board, you tried council, I mean, he kept coming back, 'cause this is what he felt his calling was. And it was a good thing he did, because Belfar is better off for having had him on council. And the things that he's accomplished during this year, and he runs a meeting, and you know, you've been here. When he says, "You're done talking," you're done talking, you know? It's, he runs a strict meeting, and it's very productive. And I'm proud to know that he has managed our city well, that we're better off now than we were the year before. Every year, we get a little better. I'm so grateful for the fact that our group here is cohesive enough, but still diverse enough, that we can get things done. And you learn as you go that part of the reason why the things that you see happening in Belfar now is because we have a unit here that thinks of what Belfar should be. When you have developers come to a city and not feel comfortable about the council on how they're gonna direct their staff to do business, or what they're gonna do with staff, if they're gonna keep them, if they're gonna leave, are they gonna stay, that has an impact as to whether or not your city grows and improves. And you can see over what has happened the last few years, that the developers feel confident about coming to Belleflower and engaging our staff, because we have a direction from a cohesive council. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm so proud to be a part of what we do here, is that we pull together, we're getting things done, and when you go to another city and they say to you, "What are you doing in Belfar? How can we do the same thing?" Well, it all boils down to this great council, that we all understand each other, we might not always agree with one another, but we respect one another, and we get things done. And I'll move off of that now and to tell a story about our new mayor, Mr. Garza. Well, six or seven years ago, I'm in my store, it's about 5 o'clock, a guy comes in, I don't know him, I'm Juan Garza, okay? Says, "I work for Englander Canaby." Well, I know Matt Canaby since he was a kid. "What do you wanna know?" He says, "You know, you guys created a water commission, and I've had some experience in water, and I'd like to be a part of that commission, if you could see your way clear to make me part of it." And so we got to talking, and I don't, it must've went an hour, hour and a half. I closed the store, I locked the door, and we're still engaged. And I could see that this guy was much more than a water commissioner. And I says, "You know what? We're gonna find you something better water commission." So I think that, well, your first gig, the Parks and Rec?
Yeah, that was it.
Right, so appointed to Parks and Rec as my guy. He did so well on that, Mr. Dutton says, "You know what? I wanna trade. I want Mr. Garza on my planning commission team." So he went to planning commission. All right. And then subsequent to that, Scott Larson, who is here tonight, says, "You know what? I've had enough on council. I'd like to retire." And there'll be an opening on the council, and the night we held the, and also Victor Sanchez is here, and the choice was Victor or Juan. And he made the final vote, and Juan became our council member. And Victor's still here, and he's waiting in the rings, and he'll be up here one of these days. But there's a story, you know, I'm so glad that I was open that evening, and that I didn't have time, you know? It was fortuitous for both of us to have that conversation. It changed Belfar that hour and a half. And I'm so proud of what we accomplished, I'm so proud of what Juan brings to the table. He will do wonderful things in Belfar, but his influence beyond the city is expansive. I mean, you bring up any name, he knows who's there. He knows what they do. He knows where they've been. He knows their phone number, he knows their email. And Belleflower is gonna be served well in the next year, as we use his contacts, as he's already done, to make our city of Belleflower better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I still remember that day, we were at the restaurant, the Italian restaurant.
Marino's, yeah.
I still remember that. Thank you. Wow. I wanna start off by just thanking God. Without God, and His strength and His blessings, I wouldn't be here. So I just thank Him for it. And I wanna thank my wife, Myra, and my son Juan, my son Daniel and Benjamin for their support. They serve with me in this role. They, without them, none of this happens. And I cannot tell you how many times I've missed dinners, and I've missed events and everything, and my wife has been just more than a trooper, so thank you for all your support. I wanna thank my colleagues, Dan and Ray, Raymond and Sonny, for the support. They really, we have a good team. You know, I think we've seen other councils in other cities, and I can tell you, bar none, we, and I'll disrespect other councilmembers from other cities here, but we do have the best city council in this region, and I'm truly honored and blessed to be a part of this team. I'm gonna thank former Mayor Larson for being here tonight. Without him, I wouldn't be here. This is a seat that he actually had before me. I actually was blessed to have nine of his months in his term, and I've never forgotten it, I never will, so I wanted to thank you for your support and your blessings. I also wanted to thank somebody who's not with us in this room tonight, but in the short time that I knew him, he absolutely left a huge impression on me in terms of just being a man of your word and serving with the utmost of integrity, and that was former Mayor Schnoplegger. He, absolutely great man, and so he's missed, and just, you know, want him and his family to know that they are in my heart and my thoughts. I wanna thank Jeff, and our city manager, and Carl, city attorney, and Mario Chichi, our city clerk, for all they do. They are instrumental in everything that we do for our residents and for our city, and so thank you, team, for all you do. And also to our directors, they really are just a step above everyone that I've met in terms of city service, so we are lucky to have each one of these directors and their team, so thank you for all you do. And then lastly, last but not least, but I wanna thank our community. You're all here tonight, you're watching us. The trust that the community has placed upon us, upon me, is not taken for granted, and so it means a lot to, it's an honor to be in this seat, and without the community, we would not be here, I would not be here. So again, just thanking the community for their support over the years, and, you know, I ask for their support and for their trust for the next year as mayor. And just some general comments, we do have a lot to be proud of. Sonny, our former mayor, did a great job in leading our city. I think we are on track, and Joe will remind me if I'm correct, but we're on track to have the lowest crime rate that we've had in our city's history, and that was under the leadership of Sonny. The economic development that everyone in this room knows and sees in our city is really just so impressive, and it doesn't happen with just one person. It takes a council, it takes a staff, it takes the development community to trust our city and our city council, so we are heading in the right direction and seeing, again, that progress is paramount, and let's keep it going. We, there's a lot of things coming up in our city. We have our parking structure that's gonna be opening up here soon. We have the Aldi and the Blink. We have the developments that are happening throughout our city, some of them that even residents here tonight don't know about, but that are coming up throughout, those are all exciting. We have our homeless shelter that should be up and running by mid-February. Absolutely. God willing, we'll have it up and running, and again, we're gonna lead the charge in terms of how to treat people that are less fortunate in all cities, and at the same time, being able to balance it with the quality of life that everyone in our city deserves. We have our new hotels coming over in Artesia and Liquid Boulevard. We have a whole bunch of street repairs that I know that Len and his team are working on throughout our city, so you're gonna start seeing a lot of construction, more than we already have in our city. But I do want to be completely honest, in the sense that this next year, in 2020, despite a lot of the good things that are happening in our city, it will be a challenge. And it will be a challenge, because I don't think it's a secret that we are living in very unfortunate, tenuous political times, and I think next year will bring about a political state in our country that we've never observed in our country. And so one thing that I do know about our city is that despite the fact that we have federal issues and political issues at that level, despite the fact that we have political issues at the state level and the regional level, what I do know about our city is that we're distinct, and we're unique, and we're united, and we've always been united, and I don't expect anything different in the next year. So what I ask our residents is that, as you go through all that, know that we appear as well, we hear it, but we are the example, and I think we've shown the example of being civil, we can be civil and respectful, and I have no doubt that my colleagues and I will continue and demonstrate that. So while we can't control what happens at other levels of government, I know we can control what happens here, and I expect that we will continue to have that decorum that we have here at the local level. So I'm really proud, again, of our city council for that. We are strong, we're united. I know that our city is innovative, we care for each other, we take care of our own, and at the same time, we take care of others. So for the next year, the next focus for me would be to continue a lot of what my colleagues have done before, which is to continue that public safety, to continue the economic development that we have in our city, to strengthen our community even more than it already is. I wanna ensure that as this progress continues in our city, that we maintain the fabric of our community. It's really important. That's one thing that I hear of people that come to our city, is they, when they come to our street fest, when they come to our festivals, they see how we have a really special community here, and with development and progress, that could be something that could be sacrificed. So I wanna ensure that in the next year, that we don't sacrifice that. I wanna ensure that the residents that we have here continue to live here, because they are our community. I wanna continue to be a good neighbor to our neighboring cities, despite the fact that we're gonna undertake some things with homelessness that may be a little jarring at first. I have all the confidence in the world that by working with our partners in our neighboring cities, that we'll get to a mutual solution that works for everyone and be able to help these communities out. So I wanna continue to be a good neighbor. And then last but not least, I wanna continue for us to be a bridge towards what I call Belleflower 2.0. Progress can't be stopped. We can live in yesterday, but I think we are under the control to be able to make tomorrow something that all of our residents can continue to enjoy and live in. So again, that's a concept that I call Belleflower 2.0, and so I want us to continue to be a bridge to that, and I have no doubt that in the next year, we'll be able to manage that. So again, thank you for the opportunity to make some comments. And so with that... And so with that, Agenda Item Number 10, City Council Announcements and Presentations. We have none for tonight. So Item Number 11, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium and as we review that particular item, you'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Larson.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. I know everybody's wanting to get out of here, so I'm gonna make this really quick. First of all, congratulations to you for your election into being mayor, and Dan for Mayor Protem. Sonny, you did a fabulous job, you all did a great job, and I wanna congratulate you on that. I wouldn't come here tonight except that one quick issue that's probably time is very much of the essence. Here in town, St. John Bosco, last Saturday, week ago, week ago, played Modern Day, and they were ranked, Modern Day was ranked number one in the nation, I mean, of all the high schools in the nation, they were ranked number one. Bosco was ranked number two. Bosco beat Verbum Day, so now they are ranked number one in the nation, and Verbum Day, I think, dropped down to second. So that made them CIF champions for the Southern section, and then they'll go on to the state championship on the 14th, I think it is, and play De La Salle, and they're heavily, heavily favored to beat De La Salle, and so presuming they do that, they will then become, as they did in 2016, national champs. And when they did it in 2016, we got a little bit of flack, because the city didn't do anything to help recognize it, and so, but you just can't put this thing together in four days. So what I would like to do, and I've kinda started talking to a number of sponsors and people, like Sam Cunningham and that, who would all like to be a part of it, and I've been talking to Jeff a little bit about what we may do, but as I say, it's not something you can do in three or four days. So unless there's somebody objects, I'd like to work with Jeff on planning a little meeting, and I've got some sponsor that wants to give him a little, you know, like an Olympic medal that says, you know, "National Champions 2018." And so with your permission, I'll go ahead and work with him on that, but I don't wanna drop the ball again this year, but it's gotta be done so quickly that I thought it best to bring it up and get your ideas and permission, and if it's all right, Jeff and I... And if there, if it's all right, Jeff and I will work together and get that done.
Want to add, Mr. Larson's correct, we've talked, it's, it's all, a fun thing to do, be happy to do it if that's the direction the council wants to go. But I think what he's asking for tonight is for the medallion that they want to award the football team, they want to use the city logo. Wouldn't have a chance to agendize it before that game of plays. So they play Saturday and win. I think what we're looking for is some, a nod of assent that, that he's okay to use the city logo on the backside of the medallion. I think that's the reason we're talking about that tonight.
Gentlemen, any thoughts?
Question, uh, what is our current policy regarding the use of the logo?
It requires.
From an ethical perspective.
Requires city approval, but that we generally interpret that to be council approval. So I, I certainly from a staff perspective, have no objection to it. I don't necessarily think you need to make formal action. If it's something concerning, anybody asks for it to be on the next agenda, we'll deal with it then. If you guys don't have any concerns about it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it too much, we can just go with it.
Any concerns from anybody?
Oh, I'm okay with it.
I don't have any either, so I, uh, I wish them luck and hopefully that'll be a good problem for us to have and be able to figure that out. But I, I don't think there's any concerns up here.
Go Braves, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Anybody else from the public wishing to make comments that are not on our agenda tonight?
Good evening, council, and good evening to the city of Bellflower. My name is Jonathan Cordova and I'm here on behalf of Congresswoman Sanchez. I am here today to congratulate, um, former mayor Santin as for all the hard work and dedication that you have put forward as mayor to the city of Bellflower. Um, it has been a pleasure to work with you. Um, I would also like to, um, present the city of Bellflower with this United States Congressional Holiday Ornament on behalf of Congresswoman Sanchez, uh, wishing everyone happy holidays and, um, and wishing that everyone has a great time. So if you may, please accept both of these items on behalf of Congresswoman Sanchez.
Thank you, we are proud to, thank you so much. Please send our regards to the Congresswoman. Thank you. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing?
Good evening.
I don't know if you remember, but we had a little problem with this shutdown on the power a while back. And, you know, we were suffering because they were, you remember that? I was the one that approached you, I'm Dr. Lynette Long, and I'm back to tell you thank you.
Maple Street.
That's, yes, sir. Yes, sir. They stopped doing that, we put our heads together, we got it together. They seen that we were not that kind of team that's going to take all of that. So, you know, the power, they, they got it together. The Edison Power got it together and said, hey, we do need to give them more respect. We do need to let them know we're going to shut it down. These businesses and things like that now are told before time and they're not shutting it down for 38 days or 38 hours. That was the time from they shut it down, 38 hours. So thank you so very much for that. I want to congratulate you, Mr. Gazar. I thank God for you. You are a man of God and I'm so glad that you have gotten this position and you've done a marvelous work. So thank you so very much. I appreciate everything you're doing. Tonight, I'm here to just let you all know that I'm part of what we're getting ready to do. I do believe that we have to pay attention to the homeless. I'm not saying that we are to let them just do whatever they want, but we do need to make sure that they do have some places where they need to go. So, uh, if you would stand, Mr. Craig, he is the owner of Frank's Restaurant on Bellflower. And he came to me, maybe not too long ago, and said, I would like to give back to the community and I would like to feed 500 homeless people. So I said, he said, do you think you can handle that? He asked the right girl. Cause I'm handling it. Amen. I'm handling it. So what we're going to do is I want you, if someone can, can pass these out to you, you'll have a, a looky loo on what's going on. The, the press is going to be there for you, Gazar. We're going to do, I'm doing a press release. Um, we're working on that right now. Channel five will be here, so I do need you to be there since you're the new one. And that's right. And we're going to hype you all up real good. So I need you all to be there. We're going to be there starting it out at nine. I talked to Viva and I, I will send her the information. The press release will be sent, I didn't know quite who you wanted me to send that to, but I can send it to her to let her know, you know, the press release will give us the information. You will know that they're coming. We're going to be there from nine to one. I've put, he's coupled up with my church and I'm the Rock Church. And we do, you know, all this, all the time, going down the Skid Road, all that kind of stuff is what I do. So we're going to make sure that they're well fed. We've already gotten T-shirts, things like that, everything is moving. I just don't like to do things without leaders knowing what's going on, because I'm a leader myself. So I wanted you to know what's getting ready to happen in our city. In case you see big old crowd of people out there on Bellflower, you'd be like, what is going on? It's going to be the homeless getting fed for free. And we're going to treat them like they are human beings, we're going to treat them like they need to be loved. Cause I've already gotten a list that they've been coming forth and they've been RSBPing and they've been saying three, four. And it's wonderful, uh, to see them be able to say, hey, we don't have a stove. So if you all know people that's homeless, you can just let them know Frank's is feeding them. This, this Christmas, we're going to be over there from nine to one, feeding 500 people. And so we just know that it's going to be done. I've contacted the shelters, I've contacted, you got your, um, they're more excited than a lot of us, uh, here in, in Bellflower. And that's your Norwalk and Saritas and, uh, yes, the girl stretched out, uh, Lakewood, uh, we went to, yeah. We, we stretched out, Paramod, we've been to all the surrounding cities of Bellflower because we want to include them to come eat. Now, we don't know where, where they're going to stay, but he's already getting plans together for places to be put up for that. But for, for December the 25th, they at least have a hot meal for them. And so we want to make sure that happens. So I, um, will send this press, the press, the press release to you all. Um, we're, we're going to do that serving on the 25th. We're going to make sure that the volunteers are in place. Anyone that wants to volunteer, just tell them we're black and come see Lynette. You know, just we're black, you know, so I can notice who they are amongst all the people. And they can, they can feel free to do what they need to do. But he has a heart to give back. Did you want to say something good? You're good? He's, he's one of those back in the bag guys, just let me spend the money kind of guy. But he wants to give back and I told him, we can do this. So this was the first move that we needed to make, we're already in progress with it. If there's anything that you need to let me know, please, 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 please do let me know. Because, you know, sometimes protocols different in different cities and I've worked with all different types of cities.
Great. Well, thank you so much, we appreciate you coming here and sharing about this upcoming nice event. Um, very kind of you, very kind of you as well to, to, to feed our homeless. And, uh, I think as more details start coming out, please, uh, and share them with us. And then, um, if you don't mind, yeah, uh, if you maintain contact with our city staff, we can coordinate, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much again for coming here and, and, uh, sharing this. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make comments, uh, on anything not in tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. I just want to come up and I want to say thank you all for the great jobs you've done this last year. I have been so impressed. Bellflower is moving up so much more rapidly than when I first started coming to meetings a little over three years ago. I am very proud to be part of this city and I want to congratulate you and thank you all. And again, congratulations, Juan.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnis, appreciate those comments. Good evening.
Good evening. Council, Mayor Garza, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Villa. I come here tonight as a concerned citizen activist. What happened here at the city council's special meeting on December 3rd was an outrage. Tonight homelessness has been talked about in less than 20 minutes so many times. And what I have to say, uh, initially will, is concerning homelessness. Community members asked the council for help in dealing with abusive landlords who want to toss tenants out during the holiday season. Did the council help the tenants? No. The council didn't even function because two of its members are landlords. So because of their personal conflicts of interest, there was no fourth vote to pass an emergency moratorium. This council obviously does not represent the community of Bellflower. And in fact, it opposes the community's interest. This seems to be a common practice in many cities. This is why myself and others are running against the corrupt establishment, which is made up of both parties, whether you're Democrat or Republican. Collaborating on screwing the disenfranchised and the working class. Working families need guaranteed housing, which is what us, the Green Party, offer through the Green New Deal. It is patently obvious that we need new parties because the Republicans and Democrats on the Bellflower City Council cooperated to screw the people. They represent the developers and the bankers. There were emails sent with no response. Many local residents here in Bellflower sent emails with no response. I want to read a short paragraph from, um, generationrent.org. It's very short. The Green Party pledged more interventions than any other party to make rent more affordable. The Green Party have pledged to end section two, no-fault evictions, and were among the first parties to commit to this policy in 2018. Section 21 should be replaced with indefinite tendencies, which will ensure renters have the security they need to build a stable life. Generation Rent's analysis has found that no-fault evictions were responsible for 10% of the homelessness cases last year. And removing the mechanisms that allow these evictions will benefit renters across the country. Tonight, you injected prayer and I ask out of dignity, this is an imperative action that should be taken with an emergency, with such an emergency situation. And consider sudden implementation. California is number one in homelessness. We're leading the way. The best way to end homelessness is to prevent it in the first place. I ask that you reconsider immediately. Rent control is a huge factor in homelessness. Yes, I encourage, we've been feeding a Skid Row, uh, under bridges for nine years. And it's getting worse. It's in every city. Consider rent control immediately. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody, anybody else wishing to make comments on anything on the agenda?
Good evening, city council.
Can you state your name and sign in, please?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Ken Letourneau. I, um, want to first thank you very much for the street festival that you guys had this summer. So it was very, very successful. And, um, you know, we had a little booth there and everything, Sonny won one of the little prizes. So, um, I think that's very important to the community. Because if you probably know, the city of Lakewood canceled theirs because of funding issues. Okay? Um, so I do want to say, um, compliment you on that as well as the, um, Carshol that was here too, with the, the Lions Club that had that there. Second point I wanted to point out too, that, um, we, our company, we just started a nonprofit organization ourselves about a year and a half ago. And it's for low income and, uh, low income and, um, homeless housing. Okay? Uh, we'll have it up and running basically next year. So we'll be, um, hopefully working with, um, private investors as well as, you know, cities and states for grants and to do building, um, here in the city of, um, Bellflower. So we have a local nonprofit who's doing the, the, the construction and everything. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much for sharing that. Thank you, Mr. Letourneau. Anybody else wishing to make comments on anything on the agenda that's not on the agenda tonight? Mr. Ashton.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Council members, uh, my name is Sean Ashton, I'm a council member for the city of Downey. I'm just here to congratulate you, Juan, on becoming mayor for this year. It's, you know, we, we've had conversations like, when is this going to happen? And, and so it's one of those things where, you know, a, as just as a friend, I, I'm very happy to, to be able to, to be here for the, for that night, for, for that. Uh, sorry I was a little bit late, but, uh, city stuff, you know, free lighting and that. Sonny, uh, sitting with you on SCAG, you've done a great job as mayor this year and appreciate everything you've done to reach, reaching out to our city. And rest of council again, you know, with, you know, I kind of addressed, uh, the audience really quickly. Uh, you guys have a great council, uh, with, um, you know, everything that goes on. You might not agree with everything, but, but, you know, they, they really put their dedication and, and their effort into making what, the, what decision that, that they have to make for the best of Bellflower. So, you know, a, as your, uh, you know, buddy to the north, so to speak, uh, very, very happy for you. And again, congratulations on all the success. And, uh, you guys are getting me to not eat as much in Artesia, I'm starting to go to Steel Craft and that Nest place is really good. So, uh, so you guys are upping your food game up, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Please, we have many more, so. Thank you, Ms. Ashton.
Congratulations again.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wishing to make comments on, Mr. Roscoe?
Good evening, my name is.
Do you want to sign in, if you'd mind?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Gus Roscoe from the city of Long Beach, and let me sign in really fast. So I'm here to congratulate my good friend Juan on today's appointment. And I also want to thank the city of Bellflower for being amazing at a lot of things, including veteran issues. Uh, I was here for the March 24th Veterans Memorial Wall that, um, that honored the Vietnam veterans. And I want to thank you for an outstanding job. I also see my good friend Ray Amada, who sits on a, a group with me in, in the city of Long Beach. And I want to thank you for being, uh, a leader in this, in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Roscoe, appreciate you being here tonight. Anybody else? Former mayor of Norwalk.
Good evening, brand new mayor, members of the city council. I'll be really brief, I just came to say, first of all, congratulations, Sonny, on a great year as mayor. We appreciate your leadership over at California Contract Cities. And Juan, of course, we're looking forward to your leadership, even though you quit us for the league. We're glad to know that you're still here. And if you guys, the traffic from Norwalk was terrible, if you can do something about that, please, I would really appreciate it. So, uh, that's why I was late. But again, congratulations to both you and to all your council for the excellent job you're doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reddard. Anybody else wishing to make comments on anything not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. Thank you, everyone, uh, let's move on. Item number 12, which is public hearings, uh, item 12A, Mrs. Stewart.
This is an item that was carried over from last meeting. It's the gen, amendment of the Building Codes, California Building Code. It's consideration possible actually conduct a public hearing to waive further reading and adopt ordinance number 1381. An ordinance adopting 2019 additions of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Energy Code, the California Fire Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Reference Standards Code, and the California Building Standards Administrative Code. Making certain amendments based on local conditions and amending the Bellflower Municipal Code to reflect such changes. And Mr. Patterson has memorized this entire title, is going to recite it and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you should read them, read the entire ordinance into the record rather than waive first reading or second reading.
We have food here, right? Let's do that. Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, on your election. Every year, the state of California mandates that there's a review of all the latest codes adopted or published in the United States. Every three years, they adopt that code, the latest version, with input from building officials, licensed professionals, architects, engineers, fire personnel, uh, Building Industry Association, as well as the general public. So every third year, we have a new code. It's really just minor amendments that come through. When there's a disaster such as an earthquake, then there's major changes. Fortunately, we've not had any of those in the last three years. Included in your packet is a listing of some of the changes that have happened in the code. We actually have three volumes of the code changes that have happened. Each volume is over 150 pages. So there's about 450 pages of small items, limited items. I ask you to consider the approval for tonight and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Uh, any questions from my fellow council members?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I will not go into volumes two and three. I will just focus my comments on volume one, because we want to get out of. Just a quick question on, on the second item, on nine, because this is really your time to shine. So I want to make sure that you answer these questions. On 902.1.1, it says, "The door shall be permitted to be locked, provided that the key is available at all times." Where's the key going to be located at?
I have no idea. Wherever the owners prescribe where they want to keep it.
So it may not be available, because if the doors are locked, then nobody has access to the key.
That's, yeah.
Okay. And, all right. The next one is, you better answer this right, Mr. Patterson.
You may get a quiz show.
10% of the total number of parking spaces on a building site provided for all types of parking facilities shall be EV spaces. Okay. So to comply with the parking requirements for a new multifamily dwellings, how will the assignment of EV parking spaces be allocated to these, to the building? So they have a multifamily building, unit?
They're in second relationship to handicap parking requirements. They are the next area that has to be addressed. There is nothing anywhere that says where they have to be in the parking lot. They just have to be grouped in the same setting in the identical format, instead of one, 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 one. They're in a group, and they can be placed anywhere within the parking.
So they're part of the common parking space? It cannot be, it cannot be assigned to a unit?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, you did well on that. Okay. Continue on volume one. It says about the 130.2, Section C. It says here, "Automatics scheduling controls, you must be able to reduce other lighting 50 to 90%. Turn the lighting off during times it is not occupied." Why will they turn off the light when it's not occupied? So are we not kind of making a safety issue?
No, it's an energy issue.
But it's a deterrent if there's light?
Well, it can be overridden by the owner themselves, but the switches are what they're called, light sensitive, and they can be adjusted to where they have certain periods of time to where they go off automatically. They're trying to get everybody in California to, all their light switches are automatically controlled instead of manual control. But currently, today, they're still being allowed to be turned off. They do, they do it both on motion and on light, on timeframe, timing, so it doesn't stay on for two hours.
So if it's be even triggered by motion, it has to be reduced by 50 to 90%? So basically, there's going to be less lighting if the building isn't occupied?
It's less artificial lighting.
Yeah, so my concern is the safety, because, you know, you know, the, you know, the broken glass rule. Somebody breaks the glass, nobody fixes it, then it gets worse.
True.
So I think it's, I think it may have an intended consequence. Again, Sacramento did this, looking at this thoroughly, it may not be good for the state.
We don't necessarily agree with all the changes that have been made by the state, Building Standards Commission. Unfortunately, we have to accept them, because the only thing that we can change is for geographic, topographic, or climatic conditions. Everything else is a mandate by the State of California, and we have no authority to change it.
Okay. I think you passed, you answered two out of three. So I give you a B+.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions from Mr. Patterson, from any of my colleagues?
I do, yeah. Mr. Patterson. Section 101.4110, it's about the fire protection. And, and you're actually the fire official, right?
Yes, sir.
Building official, and about the prevent and safety.
I'm the Bellflower Fire Marshal.
And Fire Marshal, yeah, that's what I meant to say. Thank you for correcting me, sir. But I understand here that there is no uniform or anything like that, hat or badges or whatever, that it says here. It just says, "The provisions of the Fire Code of the City of Bellflower will apply to matters affecting the related structures, processes, and premises." And it doesn't say anything about your attire. And I was, I was, I was really thinking that maybe we ought to let staff, and my colleagues agree for this, I think we ought to let staff decide, you know, because clothing is, is a little minor than, than, than a fire official truck, you know, fire chief truck or anything like that. That's too expensive.
They are.
But I think you ought to have the separate, because if you go on site, and you're a building official for building and safety, and then you're a fire marshal for fire and stuff like that, we don't want to mix those two up. And I think maybe you ought to have a hat or coat, something like that. And I actually think that, oh, staff works pretty quick. You know what? There's like four or five here. You got one for every day of the week, I think, if they get dirty.
Can I take it off? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the time tonight.
Mr. Patterson?
If there's no other questions, I'll be glad.
Mr. Dutton, any more questions?
Yeah, I would just like to wrap up, because our residents of the City of Bellflower don't understand that, that we've changed the rules here in the city to make economic development, which is a lot of construction, go smoother, faster. We heard nothing but complaints about the LA County Fire Department, about how, for an example, a corporate building, the exact same building being built in another city with the same plans, come to Bellflower and build it. But they can approve, the county, same fire department can approve them in one city, but not ours. And so we decided to circumvent that in a way, legal, of course, and made Steve Patterson, our building official, also the fire chief of Bellflower, to help expedite this. And the developers love him. And I just wanted to make you stand out, more than any other city, and not blend in with the LA County Fire Department. And thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate.
You stand out. Mr. Hamada?
Yes. Mr. Patterson? Hey, can I call you Steve?
Please do, please do.
All right, Steve. We like the kid, Steve, of course. And, but, Mr. Patterson is a consummate professional, you know? He knows his stuff. I wish I had somebody like Steve back in the 80s and since. And because, you know, this guy moves on things, he knows his stuff, with the exception of the key question, and wearing that pink hat, I may have to retract my consummate professional comment, but, and he's been standing there the longest he's ever been in City Hall since. But Steve, again, I know this is, this is a ton of information, you know, and I know that, you know, codes are constantly changing. But, you know, one question over the years, I know, this is probably one of the first times I've noticed that you adopt codes during the same year. I remember years ago, I would, I would see building codes adopted, like, for three years prior. And it's like, wait a minute. So we're working on, it's, it's 2000, but we're working off 1996 code. And it's like, could you just in general explain that?
You're absolutely right. A number of years ago, the Building Standards Commission fell behind in their adoption process. You're absolutely right. Today's codes that are being adopted today are the 2019 that will go into play by the state mandate on January 1st, 2020. So they're trying to stay up with the latest codes. Part of that was all the national codes coming together as one code body, instead of having three different code bodies. They finally settled their disagreements, and they became one, which is now known as the International Code Council, ICC. So they're all working together now. That's the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and building. They're all in one, before they were fighting with each other. But you're absolutely right. They lost a cycle for a number of years.
All right, Steve, you're good on your feet. So, thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. I mean, Mr. Hamada.
Yeah, I wouldn't be completely unless I said something right. But I'll go back to what I said earlier about the consistency of the council, causes to have consistency in staff, which allows for professionals like you to do your craft in such a way that Bellflower is being improved quicker than it would be in any other possibility. And so I want to thank you for your consistency of working here. I know that you and I are about the same age, and this isn't going to go on forever, but we have really got a great building out of the Fire Museum and Event Center, and we're going to complete that new parking structure. And those are just the big ones you see, but you've got your fingerprints on everything on the Boulevard and beyond. And I want to thank you personally and collectively for your good work.
Thank you. And I want to thank the leadership that the council sets, and I want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to work with people like Jeff, and Carl, and Lynn. It makes my job easier, whether there's a consistency of direction and a passion. It filters down through all of us. So thank you for your leadership. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Coops. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Do I have a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'll move. Way to go, Steve.
So I have a motion?
And a second.
And a second? Okay. Is there anybody out in the audience who wishes to make comments regarding item 12A? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
And a second. Okay, any further questions from any of my colleagues regarding item 12A? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Wonder where I'm at here. Going to go waive further reading and adopt ordinance number 1381.
Second motion?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any abstentions? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to item 12B. Mr. Stewart?
This is an item, what we're looking for is very little action, sorry, but it's consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider whether utility users' tax EUT should continue in effect or be modified or repealed. This is an annual routine, fairly administrative item that we've done over the last several years. We missed the advertising deadline by a couple of days on this. We're asking if the City Council opened the hearing, continue it to December 16, 2019, for further consideration. You don't have to open it. Continue the hearing.
Okay, great. Any, any concerns with continuing this item to December 16, gentlemen?
No concerns, but don't we have to open the public hearing to be able to keep it open to continue it? Don't need to? Okay, got it, okay.
Any concerns, though?
No, we just move it down.
Okay, great. So we'll continue it to December, the meeting of September, I mean, December 16, then. Okay. Item 13, for ordinances, we have none. Item 14, for items for consideration, we have none. Item 15, consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Second. Any, any conflicts, any recusals? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I moved it.
Okay. A second. Okay, so any abstentions? Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion passes. And let's move on to item number 16, council reports. Mr. Hamada?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a good past couple of weeks here. I did, on the first, I went to a grand opening of a local business. It's a new, it's the auto business. It's called Your Affordable Car. It's at the corner of Artesia and Ardmore. The owner is Victor Awana. He's a Lions member, so, but he's, he's starting up his business, and so he'll be looking to get more involved in the community, and so he's looking forward to just giving the opportunity for a certain price range of vehicles. On the fifth, I went to SCAG's 10th Annual Southern California Economic Summit. The mayor, the past mayor was also there. Some, you know, there's some always good news and bad news. So I'll just leave it at that. And there's, you know, again, you know, jobs are up, you know, poverty's down, unemployment's down. So, you know, overall, I think, you know, this, this Southern California area is doing well, but, you know, again, it covers five plus counties, and so it's a mix. It's definitely a mixed bag, and we're, and Merry Christmas to you. So on the, last Friday, again, you know, the weather was almost frightful, but our tree lighting ceremony ended up quite delightful, so. So, so we didn't have nothing else to do. So, we said, oh, nobody noticed. All right. Let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. All right, okay. And it happened in Bellflower. So, so we all had a happy time. Again, Bellflower is blessed, and it was just an awesome event. And when you know that, when Santa visits, then it's a good time. So it's going to be a good year. So, and this past weekend, I went to the Special Olympics Christmas party, full house again, special needs program. These athletes all get together from the area, I think, almost, almost a couple hundred, I believe. And they just have a great time. And they get to meet Santa, they get gifts, and they have a meal. And so it's always a great program that I see happening here in Bellflower every year. And some other great programs are related to that, and a swim team. And so there's just some great opportunities for that, you know, population. So, and this, this morning, I attended the Seropnus Christmas Party, again, Seropnus, with the media past mayor, and the councilman Dunn, and just had a great time again. Seropnus is another great organization in town that does great work here. And so, and they're helping out ladies of Little House and Tsukasa with gifts, and just, just, you know, you know, keep them just, you know, thinking about improving, and just to know that somebody cares about them. And so that'll be a nice, you know, a nice holiday for them also. So that was my last couple of weeks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're always around, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Dutton?
Excuse me, I'd just like to congratulate you, Juan, one more time before we go, and I wish you the best this year, and we got your back.
I know you do.
And then also thank you, Sonny, for your wonderful year. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sonides?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just on the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, it was a great event. I want to thank our staff, especially Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Public Works, for all that you did. And just to let you know, I have a lot of blisters on my knees, praying for the rain to stop, and I think it stopped. The angels were, listened to my prayers. And also just want to give a shout out to the Seropnus again for what they, what they do. And also, if you have not heard, if you have not seen the performance of the Bellflower School District Ensemble, please do so. I mean, their discos are just fantastic. So it put an icing on the cake in today's celebration. On a sad note, I just want to share with you that former councilmember and former mayor Mike Bressard passed away last week. The services are scheduled for December 28 at 11:00 a.m. at St. Bernard's Church. So I'll be asking, I'll be requesting for the January 13 meeting to be adjourned in his memory. So if you can attend that service, please do so. Mike is a pillar of the city. He served well, and he's, he's one of those guys that I learned from. He's one of my good friends from the very beginning of my career in Bellflower. And we stuck together, and, and I will surely miss him. So if you can attend the service, again, it's on December 28 at 11:00 a.m. at St. Bernard's Church. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sonides. Mayor Protem Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to congratulate Juan again on the great victory this evening, on you becoming our new mayor of the City of Bellflower. And I want to thank the councilmembers for allowing me to serve as mayor pro tem for the coming year. It's truly an honor and a privilege to serve in that capacity. Looking forward to a productive year, a year that we're going to look back and say, we've improved on 2019. 2020 will be a great starting point for a lot of great things. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council. and thank you, council.
All right, thank you so much. Just a couple of things. On December 2nd, regarding the upcoming temporary shelter that we're going to be having in our city, so on December 2nd, the city offered a tour of a facility for people to be able to go and see. One of the things that staff and the council are really trying hard is to, is to domestify what a shelter is. We, we know that it's new to our community. We know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors, there's a lot of unknowns regarding a shelter, so because of that, we're trying to inform the community as much as possible, and with that, we, we conducted a tour. It was lightly attended, but I'm proud of the fact that our city staff put it together and available, and I know that there's some people in the audience tonight that actually did attend that tour, and I think they, if you don't mind, I think I could just speak for them in saying that I think it wasn't at all what they thought it was gonna be, and I'm, I'm really hopeful that when this facility comes to our city, that our community will also find that, that this is going to be a value add to our community, rather than a detriment. With that, again, in our effort to continue reaching out regarding our shelter that's coming to our city tomorrow evening at Sims Park, there'll be a 6:30 meeting for the general public. We'll be there, we'll answer questions, we're going to have some stations set up for people to find out different elements of this shelter. So if you have any interest, if you want to find out more about what's coming to our community and how the program will work, please come to Sims Park tomorrow night at 6:30 PM. I attended League Leaders, the League of California Cities, has an annual event where all cities, or all the leadership within the League of California Cities gets together. It's a private conference that we put together. As a leader in League, I attended, and we have a nice array of upcoming plans that we have regarding our state and addressing those in 2020, so more on that as things come. And the tree lighting ceremony this past Friday was fantastic. Thank you for praying, Sonny, on that. Your prayers came true. I think we just hit that window of time, right, where we had rain before, we had rain after, but we had a really a perfect event, so great job, Sonny, regarding that, being the mayor there, and thanks to the Bellflower and Mayfair High students for, for participating in that event, and to our whole community that came out despite the weather. Let's see, if, for information regarding upcoming holiday events, please visit our website. I want to wish everyone the happiest of holidays and a happy new year, and a special shout out to my cousin who's here tonight, Maria Guillen. Today is her birthday, and she's here tonight, so, thank you for coming. And then, last but not least, again, Sonny, I just can't thank you enough for everything you did as mayor this past year. Not only did you do it with a class, but just the calm that you did it with. As was said before, it really takes a lot of energy to be a mayor, and you attended just about every single event that you were invited to, and, and you did it with a smile, and your optimism is just infectious, and I just really want to thank you for, for your leadership and for everything you do for our community you did for this past year. Thank you so much. And so with that, it is, it is 8:10, and I will adjourn this meeting to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:00 PM on Monday, January 13, 2020, in the green room upstairs, to conduct the outgoing mayor ceremony for Sonny Sonteines. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming.